That's always the easiest way.
How did it go today? Did you guys fix everything?
We can be ten, we can be ten minutes.
Test were good. I got to work out a couple of things. The routers worked good, so.
All right, good evening, everyone. The time is seven P M. and I'll now call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on February first. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
May I make a motion, we approve those minutes? I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Sean, thank you, John. We'll just give it just a second, we'll wait. Come on up, Ralph. Any discussion errors, changes, omissions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, the next item is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes, so entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Thank you, Sean. Your second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, under communications and correspondence, I do wanna, I guess I'll talk about this now. Elks Club, I have a, an email with a flyer that I did share with the selectmen. It's, the date is February twenty fifth and tickets are seventy-five dollars per person. And it starts at six o'clock, six P M., it's cocktail hour, but seven P M., dinner. It's a great, it's a great time, so I encourage you all to attend. And I think we'll get a flyer out on the town website too, for those who'd like to attend. That's it that I have for communication and correspondence. So we'll move on to public comment.
Reporting in progress.
I don't see anyone in the audience and I don't. Okay, maybe some tech. Okay, maybe some technical difficulties? We're good? Okay. Any, any public comment in the chat? I don't see anything. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Item seven is the monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. There is no report this evening because the Committee on Solidarity is meeting. They're holding their monthly meeting tonight. And so because of that, they, they had, did not have an update to share, so they will share an update next month. So we'll move on to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions.
Yes, we have two. Let's see. I have a motion for Brian Anzalotti for inland wetlands commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
A motion for Jennifer Talone, planning and zoning alternate.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, discussion last night, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank you.
And I, I have one. I'd like to put forward Gail Landry to take the position that Ruth Mayo resigned from on the senior center advisory board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank you all for volunteering to serve. All right, we can move on to new business. We have in your packets this evening, you have a resolution and this is a request for a bid waiver for J W C Environmental. Our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, is here this evening as well to explain this. Ryan, would you like to come up and address the board, explain what, what is this, what is it, a muffler monster?
Muffin monster.
Muffin monster, what is it?
So it's, it collects the screenings and basically washes them, grinds them, dewaters them, and then dumps them into a, a trash bin, so it's, it can be disposed of as municipal waste. And that's D E P regulations. So we bought the muffin monster eight years ago in twenty fifteen and every part on it is patented by J W C Environmental. So the auger, the, the motor for the auger and the elbow after the auger need to be replaced. It's gonna cost thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. And originally, the cost of the whole thing was ninety-six thousand dollars. So a full replacement, I didn't get the price, cause I imagine it's well over a hundred thousand. And yeah, we just need to get it fixed. Any other questions about it?
Are there other companies that do this kind of thing? Is that priced well against others?
To fix it?
Oh, no, just, just, just the devices themselves to muffin?
I, I didn't, I wasn't here in twenty fifteen when we shopped it out, so I don't know how many bids there were. I know they won it.
Yeah.
In twenty fifteen. But I imagine we're not gonna go in the direction of replacing the whole thing.
Just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't even, didn't even go down that, that rabbit hole.
How long do you think this repair will last? Hoping like another eight years or so?
Yeah.
Was there any warranty on the original one?
No.
There's no warranty on it normally, or there, it just expired?
Uh, no, there was no, yeah, no warranty.
This is one of those things that company owns the patents, like Ryan said, so if we wanna fix it, we have to, we have to go with J W C Environmental. So.
I'll make the resolution if there's no more questions.
I would just say that for something to put on the back burner for down the road is to, you know, so we don't get in this situation again to see if there's any other company out there that sells an entire unit that we wouldn't get caught in this predicament again. And just plan for the future, so we get this one fixed, we get eight years out of it, but we have a plan going down the road. We don't, we don't have an option here, as I see it.
Will do.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Request for waiver, bid requirements, J W C Environmental. Whereas the Town of Portland Water Pollution Control Center, W P C F, purchased a screen, screenings washer, washer monster system in twenty fifteen from J W C Environmental to grind, wash, compact and dewater debris captured by a screen. And whereas recently, some mechanical issues have been identified by the W P C F personnel. And whereas, a quote for repairs and improvements have, has come in at approximately thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars from J W C Environmental, with the majority of the cost being for parts needing replacement. And whereas W, J W C Environmental is the manufacturer of the parts needed for the screenings washer monster system. Now therefore, be it resolved that it, is it, that in the best interest of the town pursuant to section, section twelve oh eight, paragraph seven of the Portland Charter, Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of section twelve oh eight of the Portland Charter as it pertains to utilizing J W C Environmental as the vendor to provide for repairs, improvements needed to do W P C F screenings washer monster system. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the First Selectman, Ryan J. Curley, to act on behalf of the Town of Portland to enter into any agreements related to these repairs and improvements.
I'll second that.
Sean, any further discussion on this?
Uh, just one quick thing that came to mind. Was this the thirty-five thousand, two hundred, was this, is this enough money in the budget in the water department and sewer? Are we gonna be next week making a, a transfer over to water and sewer?
There is enough money in.
There is, okay.
Yep.
All right, should we call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan, thanks for coming. You're welcome to stay.
We're always looking for an audience, right?
All right, the, the next item in your packet is another resolution. And before we move to the, to the resolution, there's a, a memo from our town planner, Dan Buret. So I wanted, I'll, I'll read that to you all. It was emailed to you earlier today, but this kind of explains what, what this resolution is about. And the subject matter is open space easement for planning and zoning application twenty-two dash twelve, three seventy-eight Cox Road, and this is an eleven lot subdivision of property containing wetlands. Application of Tom Briggs, property of Synop Properties LLC, map seventy-eight, lot twenty-one, zone, uh, R R Forest Neighborhood Overlay Zone. And this is from Dan Buret. It was requested that I provide a brief overview regarding conservation easements to the board as this has not come before you in quite some time. The conservation easement requirements are contained in Connecticut General Statute, section eight dash twenty-five, which controls the subdivision of land. Per this statute, the requirement was incorporated into the Portland subdivision regulations in section three dot two G. This outlines the amount and situations in which open space is to be set aside. The Conservation Commission reviews all applicable subdivisions and makes a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission as to the amount and location of land that should be preserved. The Planning and Zoning Commission can approve this if it meets the subdivision regulations. This preservation can come in several forms, but in this case, it was decided to have an easement conveyed to the Town of Portland. This conservation easement makes the town the grantee and the beneficiary of this dedication. After legal review, the selectmen need to vote to accept the easement per the town charter. This then assigns the town, in this case, the ability to perpetually preserve, protect, limit, conserve and maintain the land here and after in its present natural condition. The easement documentation further lays out how this land may be used and maintained. If you have any questions, please contact. So that explains what, what this is. So this is something that needs to be approved by this board in order to accept an easement that the town will then own.
Ryan, it says after legal review, the town, the selectmen need to vote. Has it been reviewed?
It has been reviewed.
Everything's okay?
Everything, yes, yes. So this is the, the final stop on the, you know, the, the approval process. It's already gone through the legal review, planning and zoning, and, and it needs to be approved by this body in order to finalize the easement.
Ryan, how big is the easement?
That is a good question. It's not here, is it?
No, no, just says lots one and three.
I was hoping to see a map of it.
That is a good question. It's a narrow easement.
Is it right near Kelsey Pond?
No.
Well.
Well, I can get, I'll get a copy of a map for, for you all. I mean, if, if it's okay, we can approve this today, but this is, it's a requirement, the easement's a requirement based on the subdivision, but I will, I will get that to you after this meeting.
And as long as they met the requirements that, that general statute has put in our, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, but I would've liked to seen it on a map.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Jen, and I will get that to you all.
Okay.
Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
All right, I will. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Conservation easement agreement between the Town of Portland and Kelsey's Pond Estates LLC subdivision on Cox Road. Whereas on January fifth, twenty twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the subdivision application of Kelsey's Pond Estates and recommends the Board of Selectmen to accept the easement agreements for lots one and three, Land Records, volume one zero five seven, page three three three. Condition thereon and whereas the easement shall be for the following purposes, to retain, maintain and conserve in its natural state as open space, the easement agreements. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves and accepts the conservation easement agreements relating to three seventy-eight Cox Road subdivision of Kelsey's Pond Estates LLC in accordance with the town's charter.
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Jen. Any further discussion on this? And I will make sure to get you the, the size of the easement as well as a map of it as well. But if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. All right, we will move on to refunds of excess payments.
Uh, make a motion for refund of excess payment for Joan C. Uchi for nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Oakwood Sports Center of Glastonbury, five hundred and thirty-eight, excuse me, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Nissan and Fendi L T, two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents and three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, thank you, thank you, Bobby, thank you, well. Uh, we'll move on to status and committee reports. We're moving quickly this evening. So for status and committee reports, Mike, Michael, did you get Jesse's email from Youth Services? I think he sent it, I will read that.
Yeah, please do.
Um, so Jesse Ravicky sent an email earlier this week, just to update the board on, on the work that Youth and Family Services is doing. So I'm going to read this. They have held a virtual youth listening circle on culture, diversity and equity in school and community and partnered with Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Services and East Hampton Youth Services and S E R C, the State Education Resource Center, were the facilitators. On March seventh, they will be holding the first of two race and equity leadership trainings. And Jesse says, we invite any student or adult community members who are interested to contact Youth and Family Services. Starting on March first, Youth and Family Services and the library will be hosting a LGBTQ plus drop-in activity night and support style groups for LGBTQ youth and parents of those youths. We're partnering with Q plus Healthcare Advocates International and Local Volunteers. Also, recovery friendly community stickers went up on a few town buildings last week. Jesse and the Prevention and Wellness Council will be contacting local businesses for support in becoming recovery friendly workplaces. If you're interested in youth substance prevention, helping people in recovery and promoting positive he, positive mental health, the Prevention and Wellness Council meets on the fourth Wednesday of every month and the next meeting is the twenty-second at six thirty P M. downstairs at the Buck Foreman Room in the Youth Services Center. And I just wanna thank Jesse for all the good work that he's doing. I've attended some of those Prevention and Wellness Council meetings and they're doing so, a fantastic job. And thank you to this board for approving us becoming a recovery friendly community. It was great when those stickers arrived last week. Also, I have some good news on the senior center bus that this board approved using American Rescue Funds. Our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, who's here, was able to secure a bus that will be here for delivery in either June or July. And that was not an easy thing to do, because these buses are not easy to come by with supply chain shortages. So that's a big win for our seniors and thank you, Ryan, for getting that done. So that's, that's great news. And I think the plaque for Ruth is coming up very soon too as well, right?
The plaque is gonna go up on Monday.
On Monday, we, we had to do a paint job to get it, Ruth picked out the spot.
Oh, she did, okay.
So the guys are gonna paint the wall first before it goes up.
Good.
So, good news on that.
Hey, Brian, on the bus, was it within our budget?
Yes, yes, it would've come back if it, if it wasn't, yeah, no. What was the final, do you remember, Ryan?
One eleven, seven forty-eight.
So about nine.
We had one to twenty, I take allegations.
And it's what, now what's it, is it, I recall was gonna have a fair number of seats and take two wheelchairs, is that?
Yes.
Yep, twelve passengers, two wheelchairs.
Beautiful. Excellent. I was over at the doctor's office on Seabrook Road late last week and the Portland Cromwell van was over there, so I mean, it's obvious that it gets used, definitely.
It gets used, yeah. And this, this will help a lot and we'll be talking about all that in budget season shortly with the van drivers and, and all that. But I think that's it for me with status and committee reports, so I'll turn it over to Ralph.
Okay. I'll start off with Park and Rec. So one of the, there was a couple of main topics they talked about. The first one was the, you know, they had come, the last meeting to talk about the signage permit. So they did take the feedback, obviously, that came from us, that came from, I think they got lawyer feedback as well on it. And they talked about changes, tweaks to be made to the permit and they were waiting to hear back from Little League as to whether they were going to go forward with this, using a permit to do this, so. More to come, I'm sure. They did start talking about the field permits. Unfortunately, I had to leave to go to water and sewer, so I didn't really hear that discussion, but I know they probably went for another hour or so on that topic, so I'm sure I'll hear more about it. That brings me to water and sewer, which I went to right after that. So, and I, I don't remember, we left off with G Z A did their site visits and they're still doing their data collection and analysis, so hopefully they'll be coming before us soon with some feedback on what they've taken from their analysis. So they briefly talked about that. Ryan had indicated that with regards to, you know, water, we, they did have to deal with some frozen pipes at some residence or buildings that they had to help or assist with. And on the sewer side, the big thing, one of the big things was obviously the muffin monster, which we've already discussed here. They also had a pump failure on Co Avenue and that pump is off being repaired. So they're working on that. So there is a risk, obviously, cause now we only have one pump going there right now, so hopefully the other pump will get back before we have any issues. Engineering works being done for the clarifier tanks. And, and a letter of, for proposal is gonna be going out, going out, right, going out. I'm Russell Lynn, Co Avenue. We then had a, a very good presentation on the, these, what it was is that a few months ago, we had seen a presentation on these new meters, these ultrasonic meters, and, and they had talked about how to use them. And the second one really was bringing, they have a company or firm, sustainability partners that came forward and talked about a strategy of, they, their business is treating infrastructure as a service. So the challenge we have is that this is a pretty considerable charge. If we were to go this route of trying to put meters in in all of the homes that have meters, of buildings. So they provided a proposal to where you would treat it as a service and then what would be is that they would handle all the work to get all the meters replaced and they would take care of them for the twenty-five years that they were warranted they handle and what goes on with that. And you would be guaranteed a, the rate that they set would be the rate that it would cost for twenty-five years. So they had a very good presentation and, you know, certainly talked about, we'd be talking probably more with them. And they did ask the question about whether, you know, what they want, would the Board of Selectmen want them to come before the board to talk about, you know, what they had talked about there. And I said, I, you know, certainly bring it up, there's something that they could do. I don't know what the time is, cause obviously there's a whole lot of stuff going on with regards to water, so, so we'll have to see. But that, that was a, a very good thing, so it's a, it's a, it's a strategy to deal with what we have with the meter situation, so. So that was good. So that was that meeting. Then last night, I went to E D C and E D C, they're making some changes to the survey and they had get, had to get a license to be able to use the, the monkey tool, the survey monkey tool that's necessary for the survey, so they were gonna be getting that out. And the other thing they talked about was the, the business of the quarter and business of the year program, which they're gonna restart. I think it, it may already be posted, I think the, I think Ryan was gonna, I mean, Dan was gonna work to move it where it was located on the website, but that's, that's going to, that's gonna be back in place and it'll get blasted out to any of the social media places we can get it out to. And, and Dan gave updates on some of the major things. Obviously, brainer is always a conversation and things are progressing. I don't, you know, I, I don't know. One of the things that came up was about the abatement, so I know you were gonna get, it was, you were talking about you were gonna get a chance to meet with him, I don't know if you did actually meet with him, but.
I did, I did, but I don't have anything, anything to report yet.
Okay, I told you you just meet him, I didn't have any other information. And the last one was Long Range Capital, so Long Range Capital had a couple of meetings last week, a meeting this week. I was at one of the two meetings last weekend and then the meeting tonight, reviewing with all of the directors, all the departments, what their wants and needs were. And, and tonight, they were kinda going through the summarized list and talking about what they would be putting forward as recommendations that they would provide to, to you, Ryan. So they were still going at it when I asked.
Looking forward to their reports. So I think that covers it. Thank you, Ralph, I'm sorry, you've been busy. Any, anyone else for status and committee reports before we move on? Now we'll move on to public comment. I don't see anyone in the audience, is there anyone? I think Elwin, is Elwin on? Can we put Elwin on the screen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, having heard that comment about the, the abatement question, um, reminds me that I think it would be prudent with town to make certain that the, whatever the abatement agreement is, that it's tied to the proper Secretary of Interior standard restoration of the three buildings on that site. I don't think that's asking too much at all. In fact, I know that, uh, plans that have already been submitted to the town, uh, reflect that. But I think it would be prudent to have that in the language somewhere, that, uh, the work be done to the Secretary of Interior Standards. But on another, uh, matter, and one that I posed to you at least twice before, and I will adjourn tonight, and I may, I may pose the same question or statement every meeting for the rest of the year. I'd like to know what the board's engagement to date has been with Rivercog with respect to the Route sixty-six corridor study. Can anybody give me an update on that?
I, I mean, I, I will give an update, Elwyn. Typically, you know, it's, we don't go back and forth with public comments, but I will tell you, I had a meeting with, uh, both myself and, and our planner, Dan Beray, had a meeting with Rivercog not too long ago about this, because I wanted to see how much of that study would be feasible, uh, and doable in, in the Town of Portland, especially with the, uh, federal infrastructure money that is available right now. And so, uh, the answer is, some of it is doable, and, and some of it we, we will have to work to secure funding for. But it is something that, uh, I, I know I'm open to, and I know, uh, so is, uh, so is Dan, and, uh, so is the Rivercog. So we, we are, we are discussing it, but it is, um, you know, it's, it's a work in progress. But thank you for, uh, for bringing that, you know, to our attention. I, it, it has not been forgotten by me. And, and just, and I do agree, I think that's a, it's a good point. I'm glad you mentioned that about the Secretary of the Interior Standards, and, uh, we can work to, uh, put that in, uh, you know, future modifications. So, thank you.
Well, and in the face of the question, I will, I will, I appreciate your, your policy. And I will, at every, at every meeting, in some way or other, I think, try to bring to your attention what I think is the real significance of that very professional study that was done on correcting the failing traffic situation that we have in, in town, that the intersection of all roads made as, as one point, and, and a major point. And to remind you, and remind you, and remind you that correcting that, and the recommendations are clear as to how that can be corrected, would lead to enormous benefit in creation of the most significant point of the plan of conservation development, and that is to create a town center. About that action, I don't see how it's in any way feasible to create a true town center. Implementing the recommendations of that study would immediately provide the town with the ability to regulate the traffic, uh, and, and bring, bring to bear far more business interest than, than we now have, and improve the businesses that are already on Main Street dramatically as well as, and, and this is mostly the big thing. And I'm gonna talk with Dan Bertram about it as well. It would unlock, but I otherwise think it's going to be a changed community or, uh, brand replaced with the existing traffic pattern, which is gonna be heavily living on it there, um, at any point in, in time, for businesses or for residents. And if we had that plan, the Route sixty-six corridor plan implemented, that entire branded place project would be literally the center of the, the, the town center. Where everyone is just traveling on foot or by bicycle to all of the facilities that we have, whether it's the town hall, the library, any of the businesses. Just imagine what that would be as compared to what we have now, where it's almost impossible to actually pedestrian across Main Street. So, gentlemen, you're gonna hear me say it over and over. I don't think, I hate to say it, but I don't think it's, you see, anyone near enough attention on, on any one of your parts. Read the summary, and then go to the very end of it, where the recommendations are, are explained. Summary doesn't give you the fine points or the recommendations for change. Please, in fact, you have your name.
Thank you, Elwyn. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Board of Selectmen General informal discussion. Does anyone have anything for informal discussion this evening?
Well, I had the question of whether you met with Dan Bertram, and you've responded to that.
I did, yep.
The only other one I had was, do you, have you heard anything more on the, the kayak launch, and where they stand on that project?
Yeah, I do, I do have an update on that. I had, it had been over one hundred and ten days since we submitted our application to DEEP. We had to submit a, what's called a natural diversity database application, and we had not received a response. I had sent, we'd sent some emails requesting follow-ups and, and did not get any, any success with that. So I did send an email last week. It, um, wasn't the friendliest email, and, um, I, I did get a response that told me that we will have something within two weeks. So I'm expecting, that means next week I should have, uh, the letter that will outline, you know, what species are there and what mitigation, uh, techniques that the town would have to use in that. So, i- it, you know, I am encouraged. I, I did see some, some information on the area that, that maybe it's not, uh, as, um, you know, prohibitive as, as, you know, we might think. So I don't have anything yet, so stay tuned on that, but we should hear something very shortly. So thank you.
Thank you.
There should be under follow-up, or?
Um.
It's not under there, but it's, uh.
What do you got?
Small business.
We'll just, what do you got?
Brownstone Ave.
Yeah, we can, the Brown, actually, I had a great meeting yesterday on the Brownstone Avenue project on, uh, uh, two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue with Ty and Bond and ECR. Uh, they, ECR has been back on site. They have, actually, here, let me just get my notes out, because I have a, a full page of notes on this. To date, they have excavated five thousand tons of, uh, contaminated soil, and the backfill, they have backfilled the, the holes up to, um, a five, it's currently five feet below grade right now. They had run out of soil from the original site that we procured, but they found new soil today at the same cost and even better quality. So that was a, that was a big win that we, that we got today on that. And, um, so what they're doing is, we have roughly about two hundred thousand dollars left in the budget on that right now, and ECR is going to do, and that's before they do two final excavations. There's two additional sites that are targeted for remediation, so they're gonna excavate those sites. There's a, uh, there's a tank in one of them, and a, uh, and in the tank is, um, it's like a tar. It's a, uh, fill, uh, but it's, you know, solidified now. So they need to excavate that, and, and fingers crossed they don't find any additional tanks, because anything that they find, obviously, is going to impact how much money we have left in the project. So once they, once they complete those two, it's, we're gonna estimate that we have, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars left in our budget. And so the question then becomes, what, what we use that on. And there's a, you may recall, there's a small building on the site, and we, we talked about demoing that building and, and really trying to clear it out to make it as ready for development as possible. So, uh, we talked about potentially doing a market study on that property. And, uh, also, we do have to do groundwater sampling for the next year. So, uh, and there's a cost associated with that. So we're getting very close, um, to the end of the project. I know ECR is ready to be done with the project. They've been there for quite a bit. So I asked them for an estimated timeline. I say, will this, they're gonna be in there very soon now that they have this extra soil. So that was because ECR wanted to wait until they had everything in place, so they don't have to keep going back. Now that we have that, they're gonna be down there, um, I would say probably next week, once they do, once they figure out their scheduling. And I would anticipate that the project is, uh, completed by, uh, the end of March, the latest at this point.
Did they say how deep that tank is? Do they know they have an estimation?
Yeah, it's a, so apparently what they, what they said is, it's a, uh, it's a above-ground tank that was buried at one point. And they only found it when they were, when they were clearing it out. Someone nicked it with a machine. They nicked the top of it, and that's how they found this tank. And so, um, they're clearing that out. Oh, and also Ty and Bond is, they're going to be doing additional test pitting as well, just to make sure that we got everything. So they are test pitting there to make sure that there's nothing else and there's no more surprises, because an L E P will have to sign off on the site saying that it has been remediated to, to, uh, the best of, of our ability. And, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
So if we have enough money, we'll have to go through and have, um, that building, uh, go through mitigation, or was that already done?
I think it's already been identif- yeah, I think that's already been, uh, been put in, into the plans. It's, yeah.
All right.
Good question, though.
Is that the real small building?
The real small.
That brown one in the middle, like?
No, no, we're not. We have no plans to demo that. Any other questions?
Uh, where do we stand on the two sidewalk projects?
Really good question. Uh, we heard back from, we heard back from DOT this week, did we not, Ryan? Do you wanna come up and update on, on that? Do you wanna come up and give them an update? So, since you're here, thanks.
I forgot about those.
All right, so, uh, yeah, February tenth, uh, Jacobson, or actually Land Use, was sent the approval on the Connectivity Project from Free Stone down to Riverside. All right, so that's approved. Joe Dillon is currently sending, preparing to send that over to Krog. I guess they need to approve it. And then it's good to go out to bid. So he's saying two weeks for Krog, a week or two for them to approve, and then out to bid after that. So within the month, we should be out to bid. And then it should line up where it starts. The project probably is going somewhere between June and August. And then the other sidewalk project, I believe Jacobson is still working on plans for Main Street. Yeah, the Steve Grant.
We're gonna have a lot of sidewalks coming in, uh, very soon.
Yeah, and we were looking into, uh, an ad alternate on that project for actually the sidewalks around here. And, uh, since the curbs are all beat up and the sidewalk's right around, um, yeah, the community center, police station. All right? That's, uh, that's in case any money's left over, we'll, yeah.
See.
Add it in. Yeah, we'll see.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Actually, while Ryan's here, if you guys have any public works questions, now, just put them on. I think, um, just so you know, uh, the, the bid on the track is, is just about ready to go out. I don't want, you know, I don't have any, any news on that, but, um, per our contract with the state, we, uh, need to select a contractor by the fifteenth of March. So we are, uh, we're, we're moving forward on that, and, um, I, I believe that will be going out to bid this week. So, uh, so stay tuned.
So presumably, it'll be another summer project.
It better be, yeah. That's the plan. That's been the plan. All right, any other informal discussion? So, seeing none, we'll move on. I don't have anything, uh, for follow-up items this evening. And, uh, so I'll entertain a motion. We do have executive session this evening. So, uh, the Board of Selectmen will enter executive session, and we will close the meeting on Zoom and on YouTube Live and to the public, and then we will, uh, come back from executive session later and adjourn, um, the meeting, so.
You mean, motion to close this meeting?
Nope.
To just enter, entering executive session?
So can I get a, a motion to enter executive session?
I make a motion, we enter executive session?
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second that.
Second. All the, thank you both, the, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The time is seven forty-three, so thank you all for attending.
Have a good night.
Ryan, so, do you know which aisle I mean?
Yeah, trackless moment for the aisle.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they just.